All right, I'll call the February 7, 2023, meeting to order. Could I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Laird.
Here.
Commissioner Milne.
Here.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Here.
Commissioner North.
Here.
Chairman Frill.
Here.
Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda. On that, I would like to make note that we will be pulling off Letter A, the Neutrona County contract with Alcova Bath House Roof Replacement, which will be brought back up at our February 21st meeting. So with that change, do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the Amendment A, the contract for the Alcova Bath House being removed until the next POC meeting.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner North, second by Commissioner Laird. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of MS 22-8-A, request by Columbia Parking LP for approval of a preliminary plat for the Sand Hill Center, a major subdivision consisting of three lots and a parcel of approximately 20.57 acres in light industrial zoning district. Parcel is accessed off of Salt Creek Highway. Parcels include the following addresses: 3019, 3029, 3033 Salt Creek Highway. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with the state statutes, rules of the Neutrona County Commission, and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the commission to please approach the lectern and state your name and address. Okay, with no one to speak, we could get a staff report?
Again, this property is on the east side of Salt Creek Highway, one half-mile south of the I-25 interchange across from Melody Lane and Doane Lane. On January 10, 2023, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the major subdivision. The subdivision is consistent with the 2016 Neutrona County Development Plan and the 2000 Neutrona County Zoning Resolution. The proposed Sand Hill Center major subdivision is located in a neighborhood eight, Wardwell, and is consistent with the development's planned focus for industrial and commercial development. Zoning is light industrial. The intent and purpose of light industrial is to provide for light manufacturing and storage facilities. The subdivision is in conformance with the 2013 subdivision regulations, general provision, Chapter 1, and the design standards, Chapter 7. The applicant has provided evidence that a sufficient water supply system and public sewage disposal system will be provided by the Wardwell Water and Sewer District. No areas of the proposed Sand Hill major subdivision have been identified as having areas that need to be addressed in regard to soil or topographical hazards. The subdivision is within the county's sheriff's jurisdiction, and the proposed subdivision has adequate utility easements. No recreation or schools are involved. The Sand Hill Center major subdivision will not be detrimental to the surrounding areas and borders lots of the same nature and character. The Sand Hill major subdivision is a split of a parcel with existing access off of Salt Creek Highway and part of the Wardwell Water and Sewer District, therefore, an improvement and service district is not necessary. The owner of the parcel has been leasing sections of the parcel to current businesses located on the site, so the subdivision of this parcel will allow the owner to have defined lots to lease or sale.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, the staff? All right, thank you. This time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of MS 22-8 to please approach the lectern. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor? This time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to MS 22-8 to please approach the lectern. Anyone to speak in opposition? There being no one to speak for or against MS 22-8, I now declare the public hearing Do I have a motion on this?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve MS 22-8. The Columbia Park LP approved Sand Hill subdivision.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner North, second by Commissioner Milne. Any further discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's passed and approved. The next item tabled at the January 3, 2023, per the request of the applicant, asks for a motion to remove CZ 22-3 from the table for consideration. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of CZ 22-3, a request by Brandy Forgy and Scott Legursky for a zone change from the urban agricultural zoning district to light industrial zoning district. The 40-acre property is located off of Commerce Drive, currently not addressed. The commission will be, will, I'm sorry, the hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute, rules of the Neutrona County Commission, and other applicable laws. Can I may have a staff report?
Mr. Chair, first, we need a motion and a second and a vote to take it off the table.
All right, motion by Commissioner Nicolason and second by Commissioner Milne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
So it is for case ZZ 22-3. It was tabled January 3, waiting for an avocation easement to be agreed upon between the airport and the applicant. That has been completed, signed, and recorded. The property is located north of Old Yellowstone Highway, on Commerce Drive, and east of Burris Road. Again, the avocation agreement was recorded on 123-23. The property is located within neighborhood five, Air Base Acres, of the development plan. The development plan recommends industrial and commercial zoning. These uses should be developed by the infill and creation of an ISD for road upgrades. The request is for an infill of light industrial use. The request to zone the property to light industrial is supported by the development plan. There is currently public water and public sewer available through the airport waterline along Commerce Drive, and the airport had no objection to that request. The airport manager and the applicant have finalized that avocation agreement, and any additional development on the property will be reviewed by the Planning Department for zoning certificate approval and the Airport Board for approval of structures and industrial uses to assure there are no conflicts with the operation of the airport. The zone change to light industrial is supported by the development plan, and this parcel is contiguous to properties currently zoned light industrial. With the avocation easement agreement, the zone change will meet the requirements necessary for development within the airport overlay.
Thank you. Any questions, the staff? All right, thank you. At this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of CZ 22-3 to approach the lectern. Mr. Legursky, were you wanting to speak in favor of?
Yes, sir. I didn't have a whole lot to say or anything. If you guys had any questions about it?
Anybody have any questions of the applicant?
Mr. Legursky, this is Commissioner North. What are your plans, future plans for this after it is rezoned?
So we primarily bought it on speculation. We have a small trucking company in Casper, and then it came for sale, so we picked it up, and it, I guess it's surrounded by industrial, light industrial on three sides, and then the airport on the other. So we may have plans to possibly build our shop there. We're in bar none currently, and it's kind of working for us, but depending on, I guess, economics and whatnot, we all know what things cost now and stuff. In the future, that might be an option, or we may. It was kind of just a fit to rezone it, I guess, and with how it sits now, being surrounded by light industrial. But in the near future, we don't have a set plan, but possibly, as our business grows and whatnot, just another option, I guess, to maybe. We only have a couple acres where we're at now, and we may need a little more space.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Legursky. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of CZ 22-3? All right, at this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to CZ 22-3 to please approach the lectern. Anyone to speak in opposition? There being no others to speak for or against CZ 22-3, I now declare the public hearing closed. Can I get a motion on this?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the request to change the zoning from UA to light industrial.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Commissioner Nicolason, second by Commissioner North. Any discussion? There's no discussion, all in favor, with an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Anybody has public comment? It'll be limited to five minutes, but if you've got public comment, please approach the lectern.
Rose Marion Sabon, 9460 West Zero Road. Last time I was in here, I was talking about another board, Cade, and how what they have done to me and various other people is theft. It was an indirect reference that I don't feel you guys got, but some of what happens in here is along the same lines. People are paying 12 mil levies across the county, and they're not receiving services for snow removal and various other things, and I understand that you guys don't want to take on more workload and more money or more, you know, cost to the citizens, but you're allowing developments further and further out. I brought this up before, that Chapter 1, Section 2, in the previous zoning resolution had provisions to prevent this sort of stuff, and it was removed. I would like to know why. Who does that benefit? B, for example, promoting the orderly development of agricultural, residential, business, industrial, recreational, and public areas. Assure that future development will not adversely affect adjacent land use. D, control urban sprawl while cooperating with new development proposals. However, the welfare of the general public will be the primary importance. K, require all development and rezoning decisions within the county to adhere to the restrictions, qualifications, and restraints identified in the Central County Natural Hazard Study. M, protect surface water and groundwater from degradation by point and non-point sources of pollution. Q, protect from development those lands which have historical value or are currently prime agricultural lands. I find it interesting that every time it's brought up that we need zoning because nobody wants to live next door to a feedlot. If you take rangeland and productive farmland out of production, where's that going to put the cows? In a feedlot. So we don't want feedlots, but we don't want to have them a place to live. Encourage, this is S, encourage the concentration of urban development in the urbanized area of the county and provide for a more efficient use of public services and facilities, including but not limited to roads, utilities, fire protection, police protection, and schools. X, encourage the development of commercial uses at intersections of major roads and highways. Again, that's so that we don't have heavy truck traffic on roads that are not designed to tolerate them, and they're breaking down and causing an expenditure to the public. That's what zoning should be limited to. We're talking about a library again. Last time I checked, we voted no. And an independent survey was done, is my understanding of this. Well, we can make numbers look any way we want. When does no just mean no? I don't understand what the purpose of the planning board is, because they're talking about $35.5 million for a public library is being proposed. Casper Star Tribune was on the market for two years and sold for 1.67. That would have made a fantastic library. But now you guys are talking about getting rid of the community health and building a new building. Why not make that a computer extension of the library, where it doesn't affect the elderly people in those senior apartments that use the library predominantly, and they can continue not being disrupted and have an extension? There's plenty of parking, there's the internet, fiber optics, everything's there already. It would be less money, and it would continue the expansion of that Yellowstone district that everybody's wanting to do. But I think that's it. Other than why, why were these provisions removed from the zoning? I'd really like to know why. I guess I'm kind of looking to you two, because you were, these guys are new to it. You guys were part of it.
She's asking a question. Do you know why they were removed?
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
I'm starting sweet tonight, guys. Judy Jones, 335 North 8 Mile, Casper, Wyoming. Okay, let me start here. Number one, the land use plan, to me right now, the zoning resolution, should be null and void, and it needs to go back, like I've been saying. It needed the public 45 days. Eric Nelson never did, when he was here, give us a date on when he supposedly gave the 45-day notice. So I'm looking to see if this can be rolled back and start over again with it as far as for the public, right? I mean, everybody knows about it now, only because we've been screaming and yelling about it. But we still need to post it in the paper, give them their 45 days, let them get their notices in, or whatever they want to do, and then go from there. Secondly, no matter how long it takes or how long we wait, it's still a ratified illegal document to the layman's, even myself. To me, it just, you know, if you work on it up until the last five minutes, and then you pass it, it's no good, because I didn't even get a copy of it until January 17, and it was passed on December 20. So it needs to be scrubbed and cleaned up. We've got to do this properly, guys. Otherwise, you're going to end up in court. Somebody's going to say, you know, this is pretty important, Mr. Judge, and that needs to be taken care of. Secondly, I wanted to, I emailed and I talked to Michelle about it. I want to sit down with all five of you, and I want to go through this. I've been through it dozens of times, and I have found things in here that is just overreaching, hard to understand, and you left out of, like with Rose, she was just saying, you left out some pretty important stuff that was in the first draft. And so I'm asking, again, formally, to have a meeting with all five of you. I need all five of your attentions, so we can go through this together. I need Christie, even, what's his name from Building? I'm sorry, what is his name? Justin, Justin from Building. Because I'm getting a lot of the ranchers that are kind of upset about some of the restrictions that they're going to be having on their ag lands. And every day, I'm getting them in my email, and every day, I'm getting more, and every day, I go through this a little bit more. And I know you guys are busy trying to get another attorney, so I'm willing to wait a couple of weeks, you know, whatever it takes, but I want all of you, because we've got to mend fences somewhere, you know? I had to apologize, and I'm good at admitting when I'm wrong. When I'm wrong, I'm wrong. But I want all of you. I need all of you. And that's pretty much it for me tonight. I just wanted to remind you guys, I'm here, and I want to talk to you.
Anybody else who would like to make public comment? Okay, Commissioner comments, Commissioner Milne.
Yeah, so there's a lot of work being done down in Chilene right now. Couple things to highlight. House Bill 14, our clerk of court was in favor of this. All the clerks pretty much across the state were in favor of this. Equalizes the fees for civil filings across all counties, so what you pay here in Neutrona would be the same as down in Alden or wherever. That passed the House and is heading to the Senate. House Bill 20, land exchange notice for state lands, it passed, so that's good. So people will be notified when the state decides to exchange lands. House Bill 73, city-town annexations, the notice and also landowner approval, passed the House, heading to the Senate, so that's good. 185, we need to thank Forrest, one of our past commissioners, for helping with this. It's the directest distribution. It passed, using the governor's recommendation, which increased it from 13 million to approximately 24 million for local government distributions. However, we should probably expect the Senate to cut that back down. That's just kind of how it looks like it's going to happen. Senate Bill 110, personal property tax failed, 1417. If it had passed, it would have cut revenues by, to the state, by approximately $23.6 million or each local, we're looking at $85 million that entities in fiscal year '25 and following would no longer receive. People are saying we can't plow roads now. If we didn't have that money, you'd really put essential services in jeopardy. But short of that, a lot of bills were introduced and kind of fell out of the trees, didn't make it out of committees, and, but we got a lot more to go through. That's all I got.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to be brief tonight. I, along with a lot of people living in the county, have suffered from what is an unusually severe winter. I remember in the, I don't know, they tell me it was 1984 or 1985 when we had a winter that looked something like this, and some people say it's more like 1949. In any event, it's been a rough month, and I would, I'm pleased that the Road and Bridge Department has worked overtime every weekend this year, and it's going to be a significant payroll bill for the county, but it's worth it, and I know that those guys out there are working for the public as best they can. I know that the, you know, there were some people that were very grateful and reached out to the commissioners individually, and I think as a group in that respect, and there were some people that weren't as happy with some of the things that didn't get done or didn't get done as timely as we would have liked. I know there are still some issues out there. I appreciate the public's patience. I think that we just have to remember, we live in Wyoming, we have a very substantial budget for the Road and Bridge Department, and I know they've been working really hard, doing their job to try and get us to our houses and get us to our places of work and get us to our livestock. So I just appreciate Mr. Hagler's work and all the people that work for him. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Laird.
I agree with everything that's been said so far, and I know the snow is heavy, and I have pictures of, I think it's 1949, that my grandfather took. Of course, all the old timers say it's the worst snowstorm. This is just a little drop in the bucket, but I do know that our people have been working overtime and haven't had a weekend off, and they deserve the rest. I did bring up with the commissioners, I think we're going to get on the agenda and talk about having a chaplain appointed for the county, and so we'll see what everybody has to say about that. Personally, I'm in favor of doing that, but it's one of those things that needs to be The library issue, I don't think, from what I can tell, the people aren't against a new library, they just don't want to pay for it in taxes, and I can't say that I blame them about that. But there are reasons for a new library and a new county health building, and I think we also ought to have at some point, and here again, it's who pays for it, is a convention center for Casper, because we're in the center of Wyoming, and that really would draw in a lot of, a lot of good things to Casper, Wyoming, but it's all about money, and I don't think anybody sitting up here wants more taxes. I know I don't want more taxes, I want less taxes, but there are some things that the community needs, and we have other sources of money as well. My comment about the zoning document is, Judy, there's a lot of stuff I agree with you there on, and we have to figure out a way to properly, under our rules... and we have to figure out a way to, to properly, under our rules, get all of that addressed. And it's not like anybody's ignoring it. I don't know whether you're going to get a meeting with all five commissioners, but, but I would certainly listen to what you had to say, and because I don't think I know as much about it as you do. And I don't know what happened before, I can't answer any of the questions you guys asked, because it is a comprehensive document. And, uh, it, if it needs to be sorted out, and it needs to be fine-tuned, I, I think, I think these gentlemen are going to do that. It's just we've got to see what it is and clarify the language. I don't know how many times they've rewritten the Bible till they got it right, but they finally did, so, so it's a, it's a tough task. But I do appreciate people coming here to speak to us and, and, uh, talk about some of their ideas, because they're good ideas. And I listen to them. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner North.
It's been a challenging last few months, last couple of months. You know, we had record cold weather that hit us in December. We're minus 43 degrees. And we've had snow on the ground ever since. And it has, it has truly been a challenge. I remember the winters of 83, 84. I remember the winters of 78, 79. I'm not old enough to remember the ones in '49. But I have seen a lot of pictures of it. And the biggest advantage that we've got over '49 is we've got a lot better equipment now. And we have a lot better forecast to know what's coming. And so we can kind of hit some of the high areas. But this has been a very bad winter. We're only a few inches shy of setting a record for snowfall already this winter. And we, we haven't even hit the months where we get most of our snow. So, um, I know the Road and Bridge has been working, or, you know, they've been working as hard as they can. And we've had people that don't understand that, um, you know, there's only so many guys. And we have 800 miles of roads in this county. And it takes a long time to get around all of them. And when you go through them and you clear them out, and three hours later, they've blown right back in, it's difficult to keep things open, and they're doing the best they can. Fortunately, we had some warm weather this last weekend that finally started settling things down. And, and hopefully, we're, we're past the bad point, as far as that goes, and we can get caught up. But, uh, I do want to say that they have been working hard. You know, legislators have been working hard on a lot of different bills. There's some down there, there's a lot of them on tax relief right now. And it's hard to figure out just exactly which ones are going to do what. And I think the verdict's still out on that. And there's some of them that are going to go into effect immediately if they, if they get passed. And some of them that aren't going to go into effect for a while. And they're going to take a consti, constitutional amendment to pass. So we'll see what happens, but, um, there's been a lot of stuff going on. And we've lost, lost a lot of people in this community. And Susie McMurray was one of them that we just recently lost, and she did a lot for this, this county. The McMurrays have done a lot for the state, because they loved it. And it's just difficult that we, we need to focus on what's important. And, uh, not the trivial things in life, but look at the big picture.
Well, the theme tonight's going to be the snow, so. Shout out, first of all, to all emergency services that helped out during these storms. The Sheriff's Department themselves, uh, helping out and getting, uh, Mike and his group up on top of the mountain, so they could, uh, get that road back open. It was closed for a couple of days, and they needed to get up to the equipment. Sheriff's Department, uh, helped out and got them up there. Poison Spider Road's been a huge problem for us. As soon as they get it opened up, it blows right back in behind them. There's been, uh, a lot of cattle that have been lost. This, this storm just hasn't been good all the way around. So, um, having discussions with Mike and, uh, Mike Hagler, and staff meeting on Monday, those guys have been going around the clock. And, uh, barring any further weather this week, they might finally get to take a weekend off. So I appreciate all the hard work that's been put in. Filled a lot of phone calls, I understand people are upset, but you only have so much equipment and so many, so many, uh, people hours, I guess, to, to put behind it. And, uh, we got to narrow down to one area, and it's just a matter of keep on busting away out there until we can get that thing open. 15 to 20 feet, uh, foot tall drifts in places out at the airport. I mean, it's just ridiculous what they're dealing with, so. The only other thing is, I had CNFR meeting last night. We're full steam ahead, things are getting ready to, we should see ticket sales coming out here within the next month. And, uh, we're just full steam ahead. It's going to be a great, great rodeo season this year in June, second week of June. So mark it on your calendars. That's all I've got, so, uh, we, oh, go ahead.
I'd like to make motion, move back into exec session. Purpose of personnel.
Have a motion to go into exec session for personnel.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner North, all in favor? Any opposed?